Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founders Greg and Amanda Kilwin. Hello.
Good morning.
Good to have you guys here. We also have Julie and Colin from our team. Hey, guys.
Good evening.
And we have two very special guests here today. We have Janelle and Sarah of Simple Grace Collective. Hello, ladies.
Hello.
We are so thrilled to have you here today. If you are just coming in, joining us, let us know where in the world you are. We're always excited to see where you're coming in from everywhere in the world. I know this is going to be a really big call today because this is important. This is an important announcement that we're making here today and a very important training that we're going to give you. So we've got a little bit of kind of slide training to work through here in the very beginning, courtesy of our friends from Simple Grace. We're going to talk about a concept that you may be familiar with. It may be one of those things like bonk yourself in the forehead, obvious things like, why haven't I been doing that? Once you actually see how simple this is, we're going to talk about how we can take it a step further. And also just a really, really incredibly exciting announcement and some show and tell that we want to share with you at the close of our call here today. So we've got folks in Wyoming and Phoenix and Orlando, Kansas City, SoCal, Knoxville, B.C., Buffalo. What's up? It's so good to see you all. Hello, U.K. Cincinnati. And we here also are kind of all over the place as well. We've got Florida, B.C., North Dakota, and you guys are in Nebraska and also North Dakota, right? That's right. Yeah. So we are everywhere. Hello Saskatchewan. Hello, NYC. What's up NYC? I'm trying to move back. Anyway, hi. I call for another day. All right. So again, thank you for joining the party this morning live. If you want to join this live call in the future, if you're watching this as a recording, then you can join us if you go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. We hold these trainings live weekly. It's free to anyone in Team Young Living. You don't have to be a Get Oiling member yet to be a part of this community and to benefit from the trainings. And the training that we're offering today is not one that is just for folks who use Get Oiling. So feel free to invite and share this with your friends because I think you're going to get a lot of value. And again, just kind of had that, oh, my gosh, that's so simple. Why didn't I think of that moment when we talk about our training topic today? So what I'm going to do is first, go ahead. If you have questions, put them in the Q and A. Make sure that those go there because our chat gets a little fun, but it's easy to lose stuff. So I'm going to go ahead and turn video off, guys, if you could do that as well, just for the duration of these slides. And we'll pop back on and, and then we will all hang out together. Let me stop my video here. And yeah, so I'm going to go through these slides with you guys. I'm going to have Janelle and Sarah chime in as we're going through this. We're going to go through sort of a walkthrough. And then, of course, like I mentioned, really exciting, we have some things to share and show with you. Real quick here, show of hands, are you, and this is very, very pertinent to this day, right? Where as we're filming this, it is early February 2022. How many of us are excited about rise to rank? Are you here because you want to rank up, re-rank, or help someone on your team rank? Is that why you're here today? Look at all those hands going up. All right. So here's the deal. If we want to be able to rise to rank, there is one thing that we must do more of, and that is sharing, right? There's no one thing we need to do a whole lot more of to get growing and, and rank and hit those amazing bonuses that Young Living is giving away. If you rank or re-rank to executive or silver by the end of June of 2022. So today, we're going to talk about how you can create and use shareable content to grow your young living business. And, and then we're going to actually show you how you can get some done for you from our friends here. And if you know anything about the stuff that they make, you should be really excited because this is going to be really good. All right. So what we're going to do today is talk about how to create and use shareable content notes. We're going to talk about some done-for-you content that Simple Grace Collective has, both a free thing that we're going to be talking about. I think it's actually a bonus. They've got a bonus going along with some really incredible content that they now have on offer. We're going to do some website reviews as well. We do have one person signed up. And if we have, if time allows, we can add another in. If you're looking for help, do definitely go over to the Q and A and post in any questions that you have, and we'll get to everything that we can in time. And then, of course, Q and A and support, as always, that's what these live calls are for. If you need help with something, we're here to help you with that today. So add those questions to the Q and A if you've got them, and our team will be working with you while we're going through our presentation and our show and tell here. And if it's something that we need to walk through visually, then we can save that for the close of the call. So if you want to get on our list, get it, getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. This is how you can get onto one of these live Zooms every Thursday at noon Eastern. All right. So also, if you want to know how you can have dedicated time on one of these calls, as one person did register for today, you can go to getoiling.com/websitereview, fill out the form there, pick a time, and you can have dedicated space on an upcoming work, weekly work session, just like this one. All right. Now, um, let me see maybe a show of hands or some comments. Do you have, are you someone here who has loads of oily educational information? And you just don't really know exactly when you're supposed to share it or exactly what you're supposed to do with it? Maybe you have subscribed to one or more content providers. Maybe you're, you're subscribed to the Young Living blog, right? Or you just read Young Living's website, or you have just been studied up on oily and wellness-focused information for however long you have been with Young Living. Do you always feel confident that you know exactly what you're supposed to do with all that information? I mean, we all know that we're not supposed to like, you know, information or verbal vomit, right? Not supposed to just like throw stuff out at everybody unless they ask for it. But how do we create a circumstance where people can ask for it? And then what exactly is it that we give them when they do? So what we're going to learn to do today is to create simple tools to help you share Young Living more easily, more logically, more simply. You're going to see real examples from two people who are really, really good at this, one of whom enrolled like over 70 people inside of three months, and you're going to see an example of a post that both of them use. You're going to know when and how to use those simple tools that we create, and we'll talk about how you can take those tools to the next level. And then, of course, as promised, we're also going to show you the shortcut to professional content. So notes that you can share, we're going to show you a couple of different ways that you can. Basically, if you don't have time for that, we've got a way for you to purchase what it is that you need from people who know what they're doing. All right. So let me ask anybody, if you're here, maybe show me your hands. Do you know what notes are? If I put, you know, notes in air quotes, do you know what notes are? And do you use notes to share wellness tips and Young Living, Young Living information? This is, um, this has become increasingly popular, in particular on social media, you know, where you might have a post where you talk about X, Y, or Z topic, and then you say, hey, if you want my notes on this, let me know. I'm happy to share, right? And that's sort of like the, I made a thing, think like a lead magnet almost, but we're not necessarily putting it behind a landing page, right? All right. So it's not a lot of us, but y'all might have a little bit of familiarity if you're connected to a lot of folks who share Young Living online. So let's talk about what notes are. So, um, Janelle, Sarah, please, let's, can you tell us a little bit about like, generally what you would call notes and what you, I don't know, how you started using them?
Okay. So this is Janelle here. Notes were something that we just, it was a concept that we had seen out there. People were sharing a little bit more in-depth about a certain topic via what we are calling notes. And so that's where it came about, and that's, and that's how we started to develop them in our social media game or plan.
And I think for us, we wanted to simplify it a little bit. Whenever we, someone, you know, we have all of these classes and contents and everything that's at our fingertips and a lot of it, and sometimes it's, it can be too much. So let's say somebody asks about something and you would say, hey, I have a really great class on that. Instead of saying class, which people are very short on time nowadays, it's just an easier way to say notes that it makes it, it opens up a conversation a lot easier than what I was finding with, you know, where I had classes and I had different things that were, you know, very much in depth. People weren't taking the time, and it wasn't necessarily exactly what they were, were looking for and asking about. So we started doing notes, which are just shortened versions of what people were interested in, what we were sharing about.
I love that. So it's bite-sized and it's topical too, right? So it's not just like, here's this massive, all about essential oils. These notes are much smaller in, in idea, right?
Right, right. There, and it's, you know, it is all about the person asking and how, and we were just finding ourselves repeating a lot of the same things a lot. So then, you know, that's kind of where notes came from too.
Awesome. So let's talk about what's in one, right? So when you first got started with this, I'm sure that it began with something that was very simple, and then they became more rich as you started adding more things to them. But just, you know, beginning, like from the beginning, what would you put into a note, maybe when you first got started versus where you are now?
So I think, go ahead, Janelle, you do, you go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, so when I think about notes and you said it, the word is topic. So if we're talking about, let's just throw out their sleep, that is a topic. And before, maybe when we were sharing, we would, talking just straight about, sorry about my little guy, lavender, right? We're talking about sleep, we're talking about lavender, we're talking about cedarwood. So instead of that, we're going to talk about sleep as a whole, give them some information on it, and then say, these are my favorite products I recommend to help with it, or my favorite tips. So it's not just Young Living, like as far as a product goes, but it did evolve from just going straight to the product to talking about the subject or the topic, and then going into what we suggest for that topic.
Excellent. And where do you get information for these notes? Just generally speaking, I know there's probably a million answers to this. But if you were just, you know, if somebody here today was like, I want to create a note and I want to create one about sleep, what would you look for?
I would look for, number one, I, in the beginning, I use Google a lot. I would Google testimonials for, or Young Living testimonials for, and that would pop things up. If I'm following somebody on social media that does a really great job of educating, then I would, you know, use some of their stuff and, and look for that. If you have someone that you just, you know, that does a really great job, you grab that, you can grab any sort of emails that you have or courses or classes, anything like that to, to grab things.
And even in your communities, things that you've shared before on a topic or a specific product, those are all great places that there's already content in there. You just have to take it and repurpose it into what is going to work for you.
Yes, yes, I love it. So let's talk about when you use those notes, so we can put all kinds of things into them. And guys, we are going to show you some examples of what these notes can look like and kind of talk through this. But when do you use these? Like, when does the opportunity come up and how do you use notes to share Young Living?
All right. Go ahead, Janelle.
I was going to say without, you know, it's so hard to look at the other person. Um, so when to use notes? I love personally to use notes in my social media posts when I'm talking about a specific topic. Obviously, there's something in my notes about Young Living that I want to share because that product has done something for me or my family or someone close to me or whatever it may be. And so I will craft a social media post around the topic and then draw them into wanting to know more about that topic and then where I give them those things. So social media is a great place. You could be chatting with someone in person and be like, oh, my goodness, guess what? I have some notes on this exact topic that you are wanting. Can I send them over to you when I get home or something like that? So there is so many places to use these notes. Social media, of course, is one of the biggest tools that you will have to use them.
Sarah, do you have anything to add to that?
I was just going to add, I was just thinking in my head going back, I use Life Steps a lot as well. I mean, even just the free version of Life, Life Steps is a really great, it's really great content. And it's usually, you know, pretty short too, to repurpose that. I do the same thing. I use them in, you know, social media posts, you know, mostly for me, it's in social media posts. And, you know, I always find myself talking about a lot of the same products. So instead of just sending a DM over and over again, then that's something that gets saved. If I find myself, you know, saying, you know, sharing things over and over again, then it's so easy just to create a note. Saves you a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of frustration that way, you know, just to start out like that.
Awesome. So, and just so you know, you guys, like this, it really is as simple as, do you remember when you were in high school or college and you took notes in class? That's literally what we're talking about here. It's, it's notes, like this doesn't have to be, like, you don't have to be the source material. We are really talking about copying and pasting information from elsewhere. There's no expectation that this is original content. That's why we're calling them notes, right? You are just another person who has figured something out and is learning something, just like the person that you want to share with. And I think it's a really important thing to remember here. So when you're getting started with notes, you're going to create, there's a couple of ways to create them, right? So using your notes app on your phone, your tablet or your computer, like if you have, if you have an Apple device, it's literally called notes. There are other notes apps that are on Android. I think that the main point, though, is to make sure that whatever it is that you're using is something that's cloud-based, that would be on multiple different types of devices. So that if you are out in person, you could copy and paste your, your note from your notes app and put it into the DM, put it into a text message, what have you. You could also use, if you want to stay extra organized on something like this, you could use software like Evernote or Trello. And this actually does start to make something like the shareable, which is really interesting where we're talking about growing the team. You would then copy and paste information and one note for each topic, right? Let's talk about topics here for just a second. I know, Janelle and Sarah, we were talking about this yesterday. And Janelle, to a degree as well, when you were on the, the personal branding intensive special session that we had earlier this week, we were talking about how to know what notes to create, right? So can we talk a little bit about where to start with topics? Because we know that there are a bajillion Young Living products, and we want to be able to help everybody. But how do you know what notes to make first?
So Sarah and I are huge proponents of hero products and finding your hero products. So hero products, just to break it down really quickly, are the things that you love to use from Young Living. Maybe you have a testimony around them. Maybe you have a close testimony with like a friend or a family member. Maybe it's your kids or your husband, just something that you love. And then we say, get to know those hero products, and those would be great to build topics around. What do they solve? What problems do they solve? Things like that. And so love hero products and that kind of teaching. And so everybody should figure out their hero products. Let's just say that really quick.
Yeah, I just grab a handful, I mean, grab three to five that you really feel like you have a great connection with. You know, what started you out in Young Living? What has, you know, created a life change for you? And other people need that. And putting that all together makes it, especially when you're first starting out sharing, honestly, for me too, it makes it so much easier and it's so simple. And you can be more confident in what you're sharing because you, you go over it and over it again. You don't have to feel like you know, have need to know all, you know, 700 products. You talk about what you really love, and it's a great way to start, and then start those notes. And eventually, they just, they just pile on top of each other where you start to have more and more, you know, just kind of your own library.
Yep. And one of the things with it is, what are you using every day? That is going to solve what your hero products are, because what you're using is what you're going to be able to post authentically about every day.
That's right. That's right. And so what you're going to do to create these notes basically is to find, find the content that is informative about them, right? So like Sarah mentioned, Googling for testimonials, links to, actual links to product, right? So use your share link, use that little leaf icon in your Good Oiling system to create a unique link that actually plugs in your member number and enroller number, or your sponsor and enroller number to the link that goes straight to the product, right? And just have that right there for easy sharing. You could also have a copy that could be from the Young Living website directly. If Young Living has written a blog about the product, again, if you've got other sources, maybe others who share well, you can share information from other people here too, because again, these are notes, right? This isn't your original content. This is you taking notes on something that's important. And then searching for testimonials, that's a big piece. That's something that Sarah mentioned. I want to show you guys a quick trick and a website that you may or may not use. But, but I want to show you guys something that even these two didn't know about, that we talked about yesterday. And then consult your resources. If you have purchased, how many of you have purchased Young Living educational content from content providers? Right? So many of us have this. You've got classes. You've got, you, there are YouTube videos out there with just boku's of class information, right? Oily information about subjects, maybe your team holds these things. You've got resources. You can, you know, transcribe to some degree, take some notes from it. Or if you feel like the video is appropriate, then pop it into your note and share that with the person that you want to share with so that they can watch that video as well. So use the Young Living website, their blog, other blogs, content providers, books, apps like Life Steps. For instance, the free version has tons of this stuff, lots of different options to load your notes with the information that you want to put in them. So where we start with notes, like mentioned before, is, is again, just put them into your, like, a notes app on your phone, right? And like, like we've covered here, I forgot that I put this slide in here. So just sort of paraphrasing what we just talked about here. Start with what you already use. Start with what's changed your life and then branch out from there with things that you have your own experience with. And then as you're having conversations with people, just out in your general life, you start to see what the other topics are that you might want to create additional notes for, right? So just start with one and build them over time. So you can take these notes to the next level after we, we, you know, put them into our notes app or copy-pasting, copy-pasting. That's great. Let's talk about making this even more streamlined with how you share. Once you've actually built up a body of notes and the practice of using them with your sharing. So what you can do is when you've got a note that you really like sharing, you're using it a lot, put it into a saved reply so that you can share it via email or text. That's putting it into your Get Oiling system. And you can turn your notes as well into pages in your Get Oiling account for easy sharing. And these are both excellent tools for duplicating, right? So if you've got saved replies and pages that, that, that have all of this stuff in it, you can give that to your brand partners by creating a resource bundle with Get Oiling, right? And so basically, the thing that would be different here is instead of just copying and pasting into a text or into a DM, you would say, hey, let me grab your number, or let me grab your email address. I actually have notes that I can send to you really easily that way, right? Pretty cool. So what does this look like in action? This is, here's some examples, guys, of a couple of posts. Here's your show. So Janelle and Sarah both use this, and, and this is something that's worked very effectively. So what we're talking about here are, you know, either things I'm very interested in, right? Like, so Janelle, actually, you know what? I want you guys to talk about this. So Janelle, tell us a little bit about, because yours is right here on the left, that's first. Tell us a little bit about sort of what your thinking was behind this post and then what you did for folks who commented and said that they wanted your notes.
Yeah. So I ran across a really cool little study talking about a study that was done on air quality in a hospital. And so I knew that I had something that would fit in with that topic, which would be how to use essential oils safely, what to use them for, basically going through the oil and diffuser bundle. And, and so I knew that I had that resource, that note that I could send to people after that. And so I just wanted to share about this. I talked about different things in it and then put it to the end where I asked them to comment notes below and I will send them over. Sometimes I add DM me for them. And so I just crafted this post in a way that people would be like, whoa, that's really cool. I kind of wonder what she has in her notes that will tell me more about why to use them or how.
Awesome. And Sarah, what about you?
Okay. So I wasn't for sure this was, use this. So.
Sarah's post, read it.
Okay. So I like to talk about Young Living very, very laid back and very, my husband and I, my husband is actually a very big part of my sharing on social media, and a lot of people kind of get a kick out of him. He has a, a pretty funny personality. Um, I'll just say that when you're reading this post. So anyway, so I was talking about energy, and I just love to, you know, make people laugh or just be very casual when I, when I talk about Young Living. And I think, and I feel like that helps people to feel easier to reach out for those notes. So that's just, I put together things that I love about energy, you know, from Young Living, and then I work my way back. So if I, I know that I'm wanting to talk about Nisha Super B, you know, thanks for energy, then I will, you know, start there and, and start my notes with those things in mind to be able to serve them well, you know, just all about energy.
Awesome, awesome. And so when you guys were just getting started with notes, you literally were copying and pasting. Like if somebody commented, you know, with notes or left the little, the little fire emoji, then you sent them a DM, right? And you just basically said, hey, here are the notes, and you pasted in whatever the thing was, right, in the beginning?
Oh, yeah. And then eventually it just got fancier. Yes, of course. And then the beginning worked just as well, honestly, you know, as, as putting a lot of things, you know.
The whole goal of this is to get in people's DMs. It's to create that deeper connection with them and then utilize that to share what you know and your knowledge. Because each and every single one of you is knowledgeable in something that has value to other people.
Absolutely, absolutely. So let's talk about how we share. Obviously, there's the copy-paste method. If you've got this in a notes app on your phone, you're literally taking the information that you've compiled, you're copying it, and you're pasting it into your DMs because they asked you to, right? The next option would be to say, hey, I can actually send these to you really easily via email or text. Can you, you know, you, can you share that information with me and I could get this over to you? This is a really great way to get them into your contact manager, especially for folks. Like if you've been building your network online, and these aren't people who are your friends in real life, but they're, you know, folks that you've met on social, this is how you can kind of take this to that next level and get them into your system and start taking notes on them and actually using your contact manager with them. So just ask, right? And if, if they say, I know, I just put them here, that's fine too, just copy-paste. And then you could use a saved reply to send those notes if they do give you their email or phone number. And then you could also, and I want to show you guys this, it's so stinking cool. You could also share a custom page that offers your notes. You can actually build pages on your Good Oiling site that hold your notes. So you can just send them a link. And that link could have all kinds of amazing stuff on it. I'm going to show you what that looks like in a minute. But we want to talk to you guys about done-for-you content from Young Living team leaders, specifically these two who were here on this call. So how many of you guys are familiar with Simple Grace Collective? Maybe just a quick show of hands. If you purchased or gotten any of their free stuff, you know how beautiful it is, how well put together it is. Look at those hands flying up. So you guys, we are really, really thrilled to, to be here today to bring to you this really exciting announcement. And that is that Simple Grace now has done for you monthly content. And the cool thing about this monthly content here, I'm going to get out of the share and we can come back to, to video. The cool thing about this monthly content is, is that it is not just about what this month's PV promo is. It is literally about topics. So it's something that you can send out for education for your people on a monthly basis, like you might normally do with newsletters and that kind of thing. Except this content is truly multipurposeable. You can turn it into blog posts, you can turn it into notes, put it on pages in your site, and now you can start sharing information about these topics. And there's something new and fresh every month. And so what I wanted to show you guys real quick, because I did promise a show here, a show and tell of what the, what some of this can look like. Okay. So here's a note that, that Janelle uses about healthy teeth. So this is a page in Get Oiling that she's created, and it's got a pretty little image on it. She's got a thieves', I think it's a thief's toothpaste testimonial, right? There is a video that you guys did not make, right?
Correct. That's from my diamonds. It was a team call that we had, so.
Perfect. So there's a team call in here. She's digging through and getting information about, you know, ingredients, or rather, the ingredients we want to avoid, right? So the fluoride and then the ingredient that you want to be using, right? So this is kind of getting into the minutia. You're actually helping to teach somebody about something new. And if we just came to them and we were like, hey, I've got this toothpaste. It's great. Want to buy it? That's not going to work as well as saying, hey, can we talk about how this thing is dangerous and how there's a better thing? And then we finally get down here and we find out that the thing that has the thing that we need is actually thieves. So we continue. Here's a recommended schedule. Here's a recommended routine. And then all the way down here at the bottom, if you want it, this is her MYYL link with products, right? And, and all the products that are recommended here, just right there. So this is what a note can eventually look like, which is just, just so cool. And how many of these would you say you have, either of you or both? I know you share.
Yeah, we do share. We do build a lot together and then share between us. We link arms. So do that with people, by the way. Um, I don't know, maybe 15-ish different things. Some are more in-depth, some are just really small. And I will tell you that for me, when I create notes now, I just use an old format and just plug and play the different, the new graphic. If there's a video, plug in the new graphic or the new video and plug in the new verbiage, just so it all really looks the same, because I don't want to start from scratch every time.
Right, right. So Leona, that's, that's a good question. How do they differ from Sway Links, like Grow Workspace? Right, right. So Leona, that's, that's a good question. How do they differ from sway links like Grow Workspace? This is really importantly, what you're looking at right here. This is a page on your site. So this is something that you could have a quick link to it. You know, this would be set up. She could actually make this be, you know, a livingwellco.com/teeth. And she could always remember it and there it is and bloop, there it is, right? You can edit sways. That's absolutely a thing you can do and sways are something that you could use as notes. Absolutely. Like that is something that you could do. Let me see. Christina says, do you just duplicate the note page and then change the content? That's, that's what you were just saying, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Why work harder, work smarter? You already have a template, copy it. Name it the new topic, whatever note you're making. And I'm sorry if you can hear my son, he's playing with the dog right behind me. And then you can just edit it as you create the new topic. So super smart.
All right. And then, and you could also, for what it's worth, you guys, if you want to make, if you have sways, pop those in here too, right? If you create a page like this and you have sways from like Grow Workspace, you can embed those into pages and have those be notes that you use. I want to say this, this is an important thing. And we talked a little bit about the, this between the three of us yesterday. Number one, if you're just getting started with notes or you don't know how to build pages and this all seems really big to you. Please know that like the copy and paste is just as effective, right? I think Sarah, you were saying that it's just as effective. Just copy and paste your notes into the DMs. But this is more shareable for, for your team. So that's like, that's the important thing is that like, if you're to the point where you want to like give something to other people to use. Then, then this is, this is how you do that. And the other thing too, and I think this is to go back to the sway point. When you are using Grow Workspace, let's just say, and, and you have those sways, those aren't for your team to use, those are for you to use. You can gather your own notes and create something that you can actually share with your team and, you know, not violate those terms with Grow Workspace. Right? Because you don't want to give their sways to your team if your team didn't pay to use those ways too. But yeah, so you, you duplicate the note page and then change the content. Yeah. And then the other piece is, these aren't pages that are just visible to anyone on your site. You just use these for sharing. Right? That's an important thing. So it's not like, it's not, you don't have like a menu of, of read all my notes. That's, and, and why, why would you choose to not do that?
Um, because we don't have anything in front of these. And so these, we use, we use these notes. As a way to connect further with people and figure out what their need actually is and how we can give them information. So that they can make an informed choice on different products. And so if we just put this on our menu where everybody can see it. It would not, it wouldn't be as, as served as well because sure, you could put a landing page in front of it. But I'm also in, Ashley and I have talked about this quite a bit, is there is a time and a place to put a landing page where you collect their information in front of it. But these notes are not it. I use these as connection with them and then to follow up with them on the specific topic.
Here we go. All right. So without further ado, let's go look at your content. Do you want to share or do you want me to?
If you have it, you can totally share. Otherwise I can pull it up. It's up to you. I have it ready. So.
I don't, yeah, yeah. If you do, I mean, I was just going to show your homepage. So you guys, this is really cool. So if you do monthly content or you want to do monthly content, you want to send out not just to your team. But also to anyone who wants to hear from you, get your information, get your notes, get your education. There are emails that are pre-written. They're beautiful and they're not just about the PV promos. And they drip out every week with automations included and beautiful, like downloadable stuff that goes with it. It's all completely done for you. Plug and play 100% and Simple Grace is offering this now on a monthly basis.
I can't, I can't screen share.
Oh, let me fix it.
You're doing such a beautiful job. I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, 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 go for it. Here we go. Your co-host now.
Okay. Well, there you go. You can see my screen. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. Let's just, it's hard to get some browser. I'm going to just go straight to our Simple Grace homepage so that you guys can all see it from here.
Actually, real, real quick, Janelle, oh wait, no, I think it went away. Never mind. I think we're good now.
Okay. Um, that thing that just popped up is a convo flow. It's a free guide that we give to anybody who wants it. Of just helping you talk about getting people into your DMs and really the convo flow around it. So this is like the weekly email texting campaigns that we just released last month. And we did it pretty quietly because we wanted to make sure that people really loved it. And thank you for all of you who jumped in and said yes to it and then gave us such great reviews. So this is that. We have a whole bunch of other stuff. So go look at our website and what we have to offer. But this is what we're talking about specifically. So this is the secret to. Sorry, to staying connected with the weekly tips. And so what is included? Little talk specifically about this month. Every month we'll have a mini email campaign that goes along with your regular weekly tip that will get sent out. And this month is all about the phases of your cycle. That is the mini email campaign that is extra. The topic this month is women's health. And I actually, I'm going to have to pull those down just a little bit. I'm going to show you what those emails look like. I just went straight to my inbox. So you can see what it'll look like for people. And what they're going to get. And so this is really brief, you guys. Look at that right there. So this is the opt-in. If they have not opted into your weekly tips before, so they can just grab it right there. This is the mini campaign. This talks about their cycle, hormone focus, body focus, lifestyle focus, exercise focus. It goes through each of the phases and plus there is a mini tracker so that they can track their cycle. That all goes with it. That's pretty cool. And then we dig into hormones. And talking about specific products. Here is a bonus, you guys. This call right here was with Dr. Purser and it was from my team. And so I shared it with everybody who wanted it. And so it's really, really good. I'm just going to tell you.
It's really, really good.
Really good. Okay. And then we talk about the endocrine system. As you guys can see, these emails are not so heavily overloaded. That people are going to feel overwhelmed with the information that you're giving them. Then the last one is we talk about YL and the endocrine system, talking about it. And we link them out to a home cleaning guide that Young Living has already provided. Because it is so amazing. You guys should be using the resources that they have and we just grabbed it and we put it in there for you. And it's simple and easy and all of these emails are beautiful. And again, I'm going to say simple because we don't want to overwhelm. So if I go back to this, I just want to share really quick. You can, we now have it where every month your tips are going to come in the form of in our vault. We got that finally set up. And so you can do that. It's $15 every month until you cancel. Or you can grab the March through December, the rest of the year of our monthly weekly tips. And if you do that, we have a special bonus and that you can have, and I want to show it. This is customizable. You can edit this in whatever works. You actually, we're going to give you this page as well so that you can put this on your Get Oil insight if you want to. So that when people ask for your notes on this, you can just send it to them. So this is the PDF that is editable. I'm going to go smaller. And this is just a complete guide. It walks them through getting started with essential oils, the what, the why, topical. I know I'm scrolling pretty fast. Aromatic, internal. And then we go through each of the starter bundle oils. I don't know about you guys, but I still sell the diffuser and oil bundles. It's not always specific products, like this is still a key one for me. And I know Sarah would say the same thing. Talking about dilution, loyalty, re-royal, subscribe to save. And then at the backend is a page where you can customize it and have that bundle already pre-made or even just your link. Where they can go and purchase it. So that is free. If you decide you're like, I'm all in with Simple Grace and their content. And you want that, that is the bonus you get for purchasing March through December's content. Say, yep, we're all in. I want to tell you really quick, and I should probably let Sarah talk because I talk way too much. We created this content because we wanted to go more lifestyle based. And then bring in the products that supported, again, those, those specific topics. So it is not far off from the notes thing that we are talking about, that we are implementing personally in our own Young Living businesses. And that is the thing with it. We are working this business beside all of you. So we're not just giving you content that maybe you'll use and we might be so far off because we're not doing it. But we are actively pursuing this business as well. And so that is where our hearts were with this. We were going to create it anyway. So why not offer it to everybody?
So good, so good. So you guys, I wanted to share something really cool with you. Sherma, you're here today. Yesterday I was spending some time with Sherma and we were on Zoom and she's, you know, sharing with me that she's, she's using Simple Grace. It's how I found out. I didn't even know you guys started doing this. And I saw that Sherman was using. I was like, what is this? Oh, this is really, really good. But, but I was showing Sherman how we can take the emails that you guys wrote that come in this bundle, this, you know, $15 a month bundle that you guys have. And we took, she's got those, they're going out to her, to her, her list this month. But she also now has those same emails copied over and scheduled as blog posts. So now she's going to have weekly blog post content come out. And because this isn't something that's just PV promo, PV promo, PV promo. It's about women's health. It's topical. It makes perfect sense to repurpose this content. Content is infinitely repurposeable. You send these emails once, use them as a, as a blog post later on down the road. Right? Grab this stuff, use this stuff. And because it's topical, it's something that isn't just for your, your customers and your brand partners. It's not just Young Living. It incorporates Young Living. It is oiled. It is fully oiled. But it is not just oily, right? It's, it's talking about health. It's important topics. And, and it's so simple, guys, the, the editor for the email is the same editor for the blog post. So if you have two tabs open, copy the contents of the email, paste it in the blog post, right? And then just, just read through and make sure if it says email, just change it to something else, right? Just make it read like a blog post and you're good to go. The links still work. Everything works. It's beautiful and it's such an easy thing to do. Janelle has just put a link. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
No, sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Also, if you, if we're talking about starting the conversation about that content. Even putting it in, I mean, if you're on Instagram, putting together a carousel post, just with little tidbits of that. I mean, same, you know, same thought as a blog post, but there's so many different ways that you can repurpose it. And get the conversation really rolling, you know, during the month to be able to get more people to see those emails.
Yeah. Can I touch on one thing that I saw pop up for two, two people over in the chat? Every month, and Sarah and I are going to do it this, this afternoon, we didn't do it, we walk you through in a video. So January, we walked everybody through how to implement it, how to grab it. And how to put it and get it set for you to use in your Get Oil link system. Because we know that not everybody understands fully what Get Oil link offers. And so we walk you through that because we want you to be able to utilize the content that you're grabbing without having the confusion. And so that is what we do every month. And so in the vault will be the video every single month of walking you through. How to set up that content in your, in your Get Oil link site. As well as there is a discussion page in there that you can ask questions. You can say, um, I don't quite understand this. Can you explain it better? And we also are going to throw bonus stuff in there. This is our community off of Facebook now. And we are going to give Team YL everything that we have because we love Team YL.
We've got a couple of really good questions here pertaining to your content specifically. We're going to talk about these real quick. I've got a question from Ilka that I want to answer. And then we want to make sure that we give space to Kirsten who signed up for a review today. So Judy asked if there's a Canadian version of the Simple Grace monthly content. Guys, this is, this isn't really market specific because it's topical, right?
Yeah. So we can say that, I don't know exactly if Young Living offers like Progestins Plus. I'm trying to think of all we talked about this month. By Super B Master Formula, I'm not sure that it's all offered in different markets. But what is offered is the whole lifestyle and the information in the content. And so if you have to, you can go in and change it really quick and add a product that's there. But what I will also say is that this is not specific to just your customers. This is, these campaigns are perfect for your prospects as well because we wanted it to be dual purpose. And that's what Sarah and I worked really hard at making sure that you don't just use it for your customers and you're educating them. But you are able to use it for people who are not your customers yet.
There's another question here from Joel, asking about like what some of the other topics might be coming up. Because you know, maybe, maybe some guys or, or they may not want to receive information about cycles from a guy. One thing I will say, like, and I want you guys to like, please go at length about this. From what I've read of their content, Joel, and for everyone listening, it's not super, like it's evergreen. It's, it's really designed to be as evergreen as possible. So you could go and where it says February SGC, you could just change that to women's health. And in the future, when you meet somebody who needs notes on women's health, you'll have them. Right? But what are some content topics that you guys are going to be talking about soon?
I just tried to pull up that Trello, Janelle, and I couldn't get it to.
That's okay. So.
I have some login problems. Next month is Clean Home. We do have, we'll see if maybe Janelle can get, I can't. Get logged into that Trello.
Well, I can't get my phone to look at it because my son grabbed my phone. He doesn't do anything on it other than just hold it and he locked it. So. Okay, I'm in there.
Okay.
We're there. Okay. So just to let you know, we can tell you all the things that we have for the rest of the year. So Clean Home is next month, like Sarah said. April is going to be energy and ninja red. And then May is going to be summertime. June is going to be skin. July is going to be back to school. August is going to be supplements. September is going to be fall wellness. October is going to be ditch the candles. November is going to be mood and stress. And then December is going to be winter blues.
There you go. There you go. Awesome. Oh, that's so exciting. I cannot wait to see all of this beautiful stuff that you're making. Judy had a question about making, like editing the pictures to make them Canadian compliant. What about that?
Yeah. So we haven't released like the Canva graphics unless specifically asked for it. There was someone who needed to do that, needed to change it. And so we absolutely gave our, our Canva templates. That's not a big deal. We won't include them unless you ask for them, just because not everybody needs that. And we don't want information overload for people. So if you need that specifically, just ask. We're more than willing.
Perfect. And, and another like little quick tip, you guys, they already have the products linked to the Young Living products. Where they actually show up and are recommended in the email. And all you have to do is just go in and click and get that link and then use your leaf icon. And you can actually make that your own Young Living coded link. If you want to use this to send out as notes. To folks who, who are not yet your customers. All right. So real quick, Ilka and Janelle, Sarah, I want you to help with this, please. So Ilka is asking about the, the rank up or the rise to rank, how to do it best. Can you tell us where you might have? Let me see. Okay. So, so meeting a new prospect. So basically Ilka, you want to rank up, you want to start sharing. How would you guys recommend getting started?
I would focus on stars. If you, I would focus on, I mean, yes, if, I don't know where you are, if you have. Do you have a, a team underneath of you? I mean, if not, then a focus on getting to star and then getting to the next rank. But if you have people underneath of you, focus on getting them to star and teach them what it need, what it takes to get to those first levels. And don't, don't overwhelm yourself with thinking of silver right away, but break it down into those baby steps. And then we hit those and then you teach someone to hit, to hit those. And that's kind of how it, it'll build for you.
I think one of the biggest things to look for in this season, Rise to Rank is an amazing promotion. And it is totally doable for anybody. Okay? Anybody can do it. The one thing that I want you to know is that the way that you build this rise to rank. Is the way that we should all be building our business in the first place. We need to create those stars and we need to show those stars how to create stars. And as you, as you yourself build your team and figure that out, those stars eventually are going to become senior stars. And then they're going to become executives because they know how to create stars. And then they're going to become silver and then you're going to become platinum and gold and diamonds and go all the way. Because everybody can do that if you're teaching people how to become stars. And so that is the way you should be building your business from the first place. And nothing changes just because Young Living released this amazing promotion. Okay? And so one thing I want to say is jump in Simple Grace Collective in our Facebook group. We are going to, we're doing this. We're, we're helping people become stars as well and, and figure out how to make this business their own. And we're going to give you all the tips and you guys, you guys have value to bring to others as well. So this community that we have, your voices are needed and your ideas are needed in there. And we're here to walk beside you, but, and we'll give you tips and tricks. And we're here to walk beside you, but, and we'll give you tips and tricks, but you guys can drop some amazing value into that group as well.
Yeah, absolutely, you guys. Could you put the link in, in the, in the chat here so folks can join? That is free. You can join the Simple Grace group on Facebook. There's, there is a, a whole slew of videos that you guys did. It was like a brand partner thing that you did over the summer, I think. There's lots of great resources in there. So I would definitely check that out. Keep it simple. And another thing, I would recommend that you follow these two on social. Success leaves clues. And if you want to get people curious and engaging with you, the stuff that they're doing, how they're talking, the words that they're choosing, what it is that they're putting together and putting out there is working. So I would definitely recommend following what you see them doing and taking that inspiration and, and implementing that into how you're showing up on social. And then just go out and make a bunch of friends because that's what you need. You need a great big warm market to be able to grow this business. And so go make a lot of friends and offer your notes. When, you know, when somebody like you're sharing something interesting, say, hey, you know what? I love deep diving on this. Maybe you haven't. I got some notes for you if you want to cheat code. Just tell me. And when they tell you, you know, that's a lead and you have that conversation, share those notes and get them started. Awesome, awesome. Okay, so Kirsten, I would like to bring you out. I assume, I didn't put your last name in, but I think that this is you, so I'm going to allow you to talk. Hi. Let me know if this is you and you signed up for a review today because I want to make sure that we can chat about what you want to talk about. And you can unmute yourself.
I see. I can hear you.
All right, yeah, let's talk. What, what kind of help are you looking for?
Okay, so I am, I'm just getting started and I'm kind of clueless as to even how to get my page going. And I was looking at like landing pages and then I think I almost created like two pages about me. And I'm like, oh my God, I'm so lost. And then, um, yeah, so I was just trying to find the resources of where to go and watch tutorials. I'm like
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so let me show you the easiest. Well, there's a couple of things. One thing, is your, your first goal to like create a homepage? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, so I wanted to, I want to create a, just a, a regular sort of homepage, landing page. I wasn't sure if I should have it where people have to sign in and give me their contact information versus not and have it open. And yep, that's started the beginning of my page. And then was trying to add some photos, didn't know, didn't know if it was recommended to add personal photos of me or just stock photos, you know, just tons of questions. And then, um, yeah, then I, I want to be doing events in via Zoom and in person.
Okay, perfect. So the first thing, first question, do you use a landing page or not? It's kind of a matter of personal preference. It depends on how you're sharing. So if you're, if you're wanting to be at a vendor event or some kind of event where you're collecting leads from a public that you're not necessarily able to converse with directly, then having a landing page up like this is a really good idea. If it's, if it's something that you aren't necessarily sharing outside of a one-on-one, here's my website, you know, do this, do that, right? So scroll through here because the, the actual, the built-in themes on our website are great sharing tools. So you could actually say here, go to this website, give them your link and then tell them to walk through, watch the videos and, and use it that way. So it's, it is a matter of preference. If you want to create something that's very custom, then we do have several trainings on that, including totally done for you templates that you can just swap out Canva images and things like that for.
Yeah, I need to have it be simple because I have a full-time job that's 60 hours a week.
Okay.
Just, and so I need to have it like already pre-designed for me that I am not, I'm just
Don't even have to think about it. Okay, all right, here's what you do then. Here's what you do. So under customize my site, you have the, the header, the logo. Well, you actually don't need to have a logo here. Yeah, I would just use Boston Oilers is fine. If you're, especially if your team is using this, that's
I have no team.
Oh, okay. Well, then let's keep this, keep it your name. I would recommend you keep it your name unless you have reasons for not.
Okay.
Let's see, this, yep, homepage, standard built-in footer, that's fine. This is customized. We've got member number. Perfect. That's good. That's fine. You could add something to this custom section if you have, you know, something more that you want to say, but again, you don't need to. Make sure that your social is set up.
I guess a question in reference to social, like are people using their personal, like I do not have time to do Facebook, honestly. And I have to be very careful because I can't have any conflict of interest with my current position and job. And if my current employer were to find out what I'm doing, I could get fired.
Got you. Okay, well, in that's, that case, leave Boston Oilers right here. And don't put anything in the social. You can just use this as a tool when you want to share with somebody that you know you want to share with. And then finally, the other thing that I would do is go over here to my story and photo. And you, since you're not going to be just like putting this out to the whole public world and your name is one that a lot, like there, you're not the only Chris, Kirsten Warren out there, right? It's not, you don't have a super uncommon name. You could obviously put, you know, your name here, meet Kirsten. And then, and then a photo of you, you, you could choose a family photo, whatever it is that you want to do. The story here, this is where you can put a testimonial of some kind, give a little background. You know, you just, you can keep it as simple as you want to, but it's going to show up directly on the homepage.
Okay, I think that's what I was kind of doing on the pages last night when I was trying to put it on there. It was almost like developing a page and I should put it here instead, maybe.
That's right, that's right. You don't have to worry about designing anything. This is going to insert itself just in the exact right place it needs to be on this page. So it's just under my story and photo. And so once you have that done, your page is done, like you're, you're good to go. Your, your member number is in there. And then again, if you want to use a landing page, you can't, maybe you should if you're wanting to really, you know, be aware of who's going to your page for what.
I think you're right. I think that if I was at an event where I had a lot of people, whatever, then I would pop it up and, and, but right now not to have the landing page.
Right, yeah. And that's going to be under customize my site where you can actually choose, right, isn't it? Yeah, so you can choose to require one or have no landing page.
Right.
So if we go back and just save that, and there is one other thing that you could do if you wanted. If you go under contact settings, or actually, no, it's under website settings, sorry, landing pages here. You could just create a landing page and have it go to your homepage and just use this as the thing that you create and, and share for events. So instead of like having to go switch your homepage, you would just use one of these.
I would give that URL when I'm at an event, that's the landing page.
Yeah, so we put this up here. So this would be the event landing page.
Right.
Um, and then put whatever the event is here.
Right.
And then it's just going to send them to the website homepage, going to hit done and save. And then here's what you do if you're going to use this at an event. If we go to our landing pages, you see where it says kiosk right here. If you click this one, whenever somebody enters their information here, it's going to refresh this page. So they're just going to be, like the next person's going to be able to put their
That's great because I have my iPad and I just keep that landing page up there. They put it in and done.
That's right, that's right. And you also have the option, if you're doing events, you're setting your events up. Those events can show up on that built-in theme as well. So if you have upcoming events and somebody goes to your Get Oil site, they'll be able to scroll through, they'll see your story. And then they'll see upcoming events. And if you have blog posts, they could see those as well.
Okay. And then, and then for what we were just seeing right now with all those other emails to start, like I have contacts that I haven't contacted in a while, but to be able to start sending them campaigns, then we'll be able to get the tutorials on how to set that up and pop that in here.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So anytime you want to look for a topic and you want to find a quick explainer, there's this little question mark down at the bottom. And so in this case, if you want to type in campaign right here.
Yeah.
There's all of these different options for learning about campaigns. And then we also have youtube.com, if I could type that right, slash Get Oil. And if you're on a desktop, you can actually click this little search and search campaign. And, and learn more about campaigns here as well.
But are there already campaigns set up in, in Get Oil?
There are, yeah. And, and you don't have to write them for these. So for instance, if you go to your campaigns, you can actually apply them to yourself so that you can actually see what they look like in your email. But let's just say new prospects. So there's six messages in the new prospects one. This is one that I definitely recommend send it to yourself so you can see it. You could also copy and edit it if you really wanted to, but it's meant to be plug and play. So, you know, this will send them, you know, here, check off the things that you're interested in and I'll give you my four steps to healthy living. It's already done. Like you don't have to write anything, do anything. And so you could actually see the emails they would get. There's also new members for different markets. So if you, if you got a, a new member started in Canada with a PSK, then you could actually go and see like what they would receive and you could apply this campaign to that person when they get started.
Okay, and then for my Spanish speaking ones, I could just take that campaign and it's okay to sort of modify it into Spanish?
Absolutely, yeah. So what you would do here is you would copy it and you would say Canadian, new members starter kit, and then put it in Spanish and then hit okay. And then you would just go in and translate those emails.
Okay.
Yep. So do you, do you feel more confident moving forward?
I, yeah, I, I know where to find now some of the resources and stuff like that. And I, I'm, I'm guessing I go to the contacts and I just click to assign them to that campaign. I think I did that with some people. Like I think I'm in there in, in the contacts as, you know, and in my contacts, I put my name, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You could send yourself an email by simply clicking email. But you could also, and, and you could pull a saved reply from there, but you could also scroll down here to campaigns. And it looks like you actually do have a new customer's campaign added. You can just add one from right here.
And when I send an email, is that email coming from my Gmail or is it coming from another email from Get Oil? Do I have another email separate?
So it is whatever email address you have set up in your account.
Got it.
Yeah, and, and, and we do, we do recommend that you eventually have your own, right? So yourname.com or whatever. But for now, it is coming from your email address and we send it like on your behalf. So it's like an oilye-mail.com is who it's sent through, but it is delivered from your email address. Or, it looks like it is.
And you, you recommend having what you send?
Eventually you want to get your own URL, right? So your, yourname.com, yourwhatever.com and then having your email at youremail.com, whatever that is. Because it's, it's just, it's better for email delivery long-term.
Okay, and then as far as the Zoom meetings, I don't have to have a Zoom account. I can just use that Zoom link and just click and go.
That's right. Yeah, that's exactly right.
And I'm not limited to time on that? Am I limited to 30 minutes or 40 minutes?
You are limited to, right, Greg, you, it's, there's not time limit on the Zoom calls themselves, right?
I did learn it's 24 hours, but that's usually longer than most people.
Oh, yeah. No, no. The biggest thing is, as you know, with this free Zoom, you only get like 45 minutes with, you know, and then it cuts you off for a free Zoom. So that's super convenient. And thank you for hosting that because it just makes it a lot easier to not have to like have another fee to pay.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the one important thing is that you start the meeting from within your back office versus clicking on a link that you send to other people. If you click on the link that you send to the people that are going to be attending, then that will limit you. But as long as you log in through your Get Oil back office, then that will make sure that you don't have a limit.
I see.
That's right. Yeah, so you can share this link and you could actually send that out to people. But you could, like, this is the one that you want to use to start it and there's no issue.
Right, so I, I'll just go on to the YouTube to kind of, because I want to be able to send text messages and emails to people inviting them to the event.
Yeah, yeah. So all you have to do is pick the people that you want to send those invitations to in your contact manager. You might tag them when you upload them or add them or depending, and I don't want to go and show all of your contact information on a broadcast here, but you could also go and check the people that you know you want to invite. When you create your event, you can choose who you invite from there. You can see who you've invited. We actually just did a couple of, of, on our YouTube channel. We just recently did, if we go over here, the last two ones that we did as of, as of this recording are on events. If you want to get a little in, in depth on those, and we do have playlists and one of those is blogging and events.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I'm sure I'll figure that out.
Absolutely. And we're here if you need any help along the way. Thanks for being on.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Of course. All right. Hey, Janelle, Sarah, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, you guys. I hope that you head over to simplegraceco.com and check this stuff out. It is, it's $15 a month, I think is, is the pricing, but for 150, you get it for the rest of this year. Plus that amazing PDF that is editable, brandable to you that, that you can use to share notes on the premium starter kit. So I'm really excited to see that and we're so grateful to have you here. Is there anything else you guys would like to say or share before we send everyone off?
Thanks for having us.
Janelle?
Janelle says no.
You'd like to say? So cute.
It was actually pretty good. I'm very thankful. He wasn't too bad.
Oh, he was wonderful. Oh, we, okay, so we so appreciate you.
Hi.
And we always look forward to having you on these calls. Definitely, guys, check the replay if you're just tuning in, if you caught us late. For those of you who are wanting to dig in a little deeper into your website and setting your website up, our partner sister, our sister platform, AttractWell, that is also ours. It's, it's exactly the same as Get Oil. It's just for not oily people. I've got to give them some love too. But we are doing a training over there today on 404 pages. So like where people go when your links are broken. So if you go to attractwell.com/officehours, you can join that call today. And Sarah walked through on creating a 404 page. So till then, you guys head over to Simple Grace, get that content, get that content because you can put it into your notes. You could send it to your people. You can use it in the future and you can make it into blog posts and it's so beautiful. And it is, it's relevant all the time. So I thank you guys again so much for being such a blessing to this community. And we hope to see all of you back here next week, same time.
Bye.